To go ahead and convene this meeting, the Placer County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2010. If you will please stand for the fight salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cork would read the meeting procedures, please.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, February 23rd, 2010. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. This is time for public comments. Time when members of the public may comment on any item that is not on our agenda, knowing that the board cannot take action on any items that are presented in public comment.
Good morning. Angela Tati, Placer Arts, 808 Lincoln Way in Auburn. And I have some good news they wanted to bring to you today and allow the public to have a little bit of information at the same time. You may know that in the summer of 2007, we launched two systems to assist the marketing of arts and culture and heritage producers in Placer County. One was a Zoomaroo calendar system, which is a network of calendar portals, and the other was an artist registry for visual performing and literary arts. Through the use of these online technologies, now, two years later, we have more than 25 agencies participating in the calendar network, including California Watchable Wildlife, Placer Grown, Colfax Chamber, Forest Hill Chamber, and a host of arts and cultural organizations, which I'll talk a little bit more about. We have more than 640 producing organizations of all kinds placing information on the calendar, and more than 1,500 visual performing artists on the registry. And the public's use is increasing by the day. Just like people are booking travel on the Internet, people are finding things to do in Placer County through these systems and finding out who to buy local products from with respect to organically grown arts products and services. So then with the help of the Placer Community Foundation, coupled with the investment of the county in our partnering cities, we have been working for the last year and a half with 13 organizations on the Western Slope in an audience development project. And those organizations include the Auburn Community Chamber, Auburn Community Concerts Association, Auburn Placer Performing Arts Center, Auburn Symphony, Chamber Music Alive in Rockland, Lincoln Arts, Magic Circle Theater in Roseville, Placer Community Theater in Auburn, Placer Theater Ballet. They provide services all over South Placer, Roseville Arts and their wonderful Blue Line Gallery, the South Placer Heritage Foundation at the Blue Goose in Loomis, Take Note Troop of South Placer, and Theater Alive of South Placer. So we have, all of these organizations are now in the calendar network. They're all leveraging the artist registry. And we've been tracking their audience numbers. And we have to report, from 2008 to 2009, we show a 12% audience increase. 12% against the backdrop of a national trend in decreased audience of 17%. So we're very excited because we know this means people who live here are enjoying the arts and people are coming outside of the county, into the county, and spending their money and their time here, which is good news for everyone. So, thanks for your assistance. My three minutes is up, and we're headed up the hill today to repeat this process with nine organizations on the Eastern Slope. And we'll be back with more information about that later. Thanks.
Great. Thank you for your leadership on that, pulling that whole thing together, Angela. It's fantastic. Any other members of the public wish to address the board at this time?
Hello. My name is Paul Ardoan. I live on 6413 Fillmore Court in Rockland. I'm here representing Organizing for America. And we're here to thank the supervisors for supporting the staff to pursue the funding projects that use the funds from the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009. This is the one-year anniversary of the passage of that act, and so far, we've seen over $57 million in funds distributed into Placer County. It's gone towards things like the Auburn Folsom Road Project, clean water funding for the Facilities Department, improvement in Kings Beach, and jobs creation and economic development through the Golden Sierra Job Training Agency. And I have friends who have taken advantage of those resources. So we're here to say thank you very much for your support and to let everyone know that Organizing for America stands fully behind the ERA funds. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Tom McPherson, and I know you guys have your hands full these days. But I too want to thank the board and everybody concerned regarding funding for all these projects. And I too am from Organizing for America. I live in Krishna Valley. This is the first time I've done this, so I'm kind of getting used to it. But thank you and looking forward to your further support.
Thank you, Tom. Yes, sir.
I'm Scott Johnson, 15215 Bancroft Road, Auburn, and a small business owner since 1979 in Placer County. And I'm also here on behalf of Organizing for America to thank the board and staff for applying for the federal funds that almost $60 million that have been acquired for Placer County. And encourage you going forward to continue to ask staff to apply for funding for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Good morning. I'm Gonzalo Vergara. I'm also from Organizing for America. I live in 1950 Homewood Lane in Lincoln, California. I retired from the United States Air Force. I traveled in just about every 50, over 50 states, and I chose, we chose this fair place to live at. And I'm very proud to be with Organizing for America and a member of, and a resident of Placer County. And I also like, like my other fellows, I'd like to encourage to continue to seek funding. And there's a lot of people that really require a lot of help, and I know that you, well, anybody else knows this, but we really encourage you and the staff to seek these funds that are made available. Ultimately, it's how it depends, and it affects us locally because we always speak about these national issues. But nevertheless, what's important is how it really affects soul politics, as local as you all know. But thank you very much. We really appreciate all the contributions you've made, and we encourage you and your staff to really go out there and get as many funds out for the Placer. I'd like to also thank all the members of the, I saw a lot of CHBs and Sheriff's Department, and we thank you for all your cooperation in keeping us safe. Thank you. Have a great day.
Anybody else wish to address the board on any item on our agenda today? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Move on to supervisory committee reports. Any members, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Montgomery. Yes, yes, Mr. Holmes. Was it the sir part that threw you?
Not likely. I haven't been called sir lately. Last night, I was at a meeting with Rick Buckman, our county veteran service officer, and he gave me the 2009 annual report from the County Service Officers Association, which now he is the president of. And some more good news. Through Mr. Buckman's leadership, Placer County has received over $14 million in annualized monthly payments to our veterans and eight million, over $8 million in one-time payments to our veterans for a total of $22 million that's been returned to the veterans in Placer County. It's a significant achievement, particularly when you look at some of the larger counties. For example, Los Angeles County received only $11 million total returns into the county. So my hats off to Mr. Buckman and his staff for doing such a tremendous job. He starts his day real early in the morning because, as you know, the Veterans Services is back east. I see him going to his office at 6:00. He has meetings from 8:00 to 4:00. He meets with one veteran every half hour throughout the day, and his calendar is booked up through the middle of March. So it's a tremendous achievement for Placer County and one of our good guys.
Great. Thank you for reporting on that. Supervisor Wigan.
I'd just like to note that Supervisor Rockham is not here today, only because he's having shoulder surgery, so I thought the public ought to know that.
Thank you for pointing that out. As board knows, I represent this board on the Golden Sierra Job Training Agency. Just want to let you know that we met in closed session last week to discuss the ongoing litigation with Nevada County and Sierra County over their decision to pull out of the JPA but not recognizing their obligation as it relates to the unfunded liability for the employees within the JPA, the liability which was incurred while they participated. So that litigation is proceeding. Understanding the nature of closed session as you do, that's really all I can report at this point. Just wanted you to know. That's where we are. Okay. Seeing no other committee report items, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on consent that any supervisors would like to have removed for discussion? Seeing none, are there any items on consent that members of the public would like to Okay. As we act on this, I will be asking for a motion to approve consent, understanding that the board, in approving this consent agenda, will be serving in our capacity, not only as the Board of Supervisors, but also as the in-home supportive services, public authority for item number 20, as well as the redevelopment agency for item number 23. With that, is there a motion on consent? I have a motion, Supervisor Holmes, and a second Supervisor Montgomery. Roll call, please.
Holmes.
Aye.
Wigan.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Youler. Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. We have a couple of minutes, so we will go ahead to the first department head item. Item number 60. Oh, just one point of clarification. There had been some conversation, I know, between myself and a few of the countywide electeds. Mr. McCauley, I apologize for not returning your call, seeing you sitting there. Did speak to a couple of the countywide electeds in regard to our 11 o'clock timed item. As later yesterday afternoon, we thought Supervisor Montgomery might not be able to join us today because she wasn't feeling well. Fortunately, she recovered quickly and is with us today. So the board is going to proceed with our 11 o'clock item today. I know a number of you are here for that item. Just wanted you to know that that will be taken up at 11. We will proceed with the first department head item, item page number 69 of our agenda packet. It is item number five on our agenda. I asked that the CEO's office place this item on the agenda. The board will recall that last summer, we had some conversations after our board had worked diligently with the department heads and the CEO's office to balance our 2009-2010 budget. Some suggestions were made, and over the course of a couple of different board meetings, some conversations were had in regard to cost-cutting measures and other ways that we can let the public know how dollars are being spent. I, at the time, had suggested that all county positions, compensation and so forth, be made publicly available so that the public understands what their public officials, be they elected, appointed, or simply hired, how we are compensated. And that has not moved forward to the degree which I was looking for, but that's okay. We do these things in small steps, not radical changes from one point to another. Of late, a lot of attention has been paid to what are known as merit increases, otherwise also known as step increases. They're largely interchangeable. It's the way that employees proceed through their prescribed compensation for their job description based on steps that are outlined in our county ordinance. The employees proceed through these steps based on their merit, and therefore, they're kind of interchangeably known, either as merit increases or step increases. Per our county ordinance, those merit increases or step increases that affect management and what are known as confidential employees, these are employees that handle confidential information. They may not be management people, but they handle confidential information. Merit increases for those employees, per our county ordinance that was adopted in 1951, come to this board for approval. Merit increases for classified employees go to the Civil Service Commission for approval, and this board never sees those. A lot of attention has been paid to those that are paid to management and confidential, even though of the 740 merit increases that will be awarded or have been awarded in this fiscal year in our current balanced budget, of the 740, 73 are for management and confidential. 667 are for the quote-unquote rank-and-file or members of the DSA. 667 of them, this board never sees, which also means the public never sees. So in the interest of the elevated attention being paid to these, I requested of staff that our board begin to receive, now, again, actions on these are governed by ordinance. So I'm not asking that our board take action on the merit increases for the classified employees, but rather that our board begin to receive a report, an informational report that will be included in our agenda packet. After a merit increase has been awarded to a classified employee by the Civil Service Commission, that we simply receive a report that says, on this day, these employees were granted, by action of the Civil Service Commission, were granted merit increases. Here's their name, here's their position, here's their compensation as it was, here's their compensation as it was adjusted. The same information that we get in our agendas on merit increases for management and confidential. I've made the request to the CEO's office, county council rightly, requested that, since it is a change in our standard practice, the board has never seen this information before, since it is a change in our standard practice, that, it was council's opinion that it might make sense that this come to the board for action by the board, pardon me, to direct staff to modify our practice thusly and begin reporting these. So that's the item that is before you. I am looking for concurrence that our board begin to receive the information in regard to the merit increases for all employees as they are awarded by the Civil Service Commission. And I'll open it up for discussion. Supervisor Montgomery.
I thank you for bringing this forward because I think it's a great step towards more transparency at the county level, to make this kind of information available. We're all public servants, whether we're elected, appointed, or, as you say, hired. And I think we owe it to the public to be as open and transparent and truthful with them as possible, and to ourselves as well, since we are all taxpayers in Placer County as well as elected representatives. I will, I would hope that this is just the start of this kind of transparency. I absolutely second your suggestion, and I've made it to the CEO in the past, that we get W-2s, 1099s, so we know what people are getting compensated for up on the county website. As I say, we're all public servants. None of us has anything to be ashamed of in terms of what we're earning. And I think this, bringing it toward us, to us as an information item on the merit piece, is a great first step. I would encourage us as a board to take that second step, make sure that we do get the W-2 and the 1099 information posted with, in my, you know, most wonderful world, the idea that we get full compensation packages somehow up there on the web for people to see. As I say, none of us here at the county has any reason to be embarrassed by the compensation we get. And in fact, there are certainly people at this county who are, in my humble opinion, underpaid for what they do. And I just really am thankful that you've brought this forward, and I am very pleased to be able to lend my support to it.
Thank you, Supervisor Wigan.
Certainly have my concurrence. Kirk thinks it's a good idea. I think it would be. Obviously, the county is a service organization, as is all government. The vast proportion of our budget is in salaries and wages and benefits because we're people-driven. These are extraordinary budget times, and to the extent that our citizenry has a much better understanding of what we're up against and how we have addressed those issues, I think, very successfully, frankly, is good, and it's a step in that direction that should help us get through these continued difficult times.
Supervisor Holmes.
Damn good idea. I make a motion that will improve it.
Okay. We have a motion by Supervisor Holmes and a second by Supervisor Wigan, under discussion. I see Tony's light is on, which is good because I was about to ask you a question. Tony, as you know, you and I have talked, well, actually, over the years now, you and I have talked about this very subject of merit increases. I have alluded now to the county ordinance which governs it. And of course, county ordinances, though this one that dictates the formula by which step slash merit increases are awarded, was first put in place in largely the same form that it is today, almost 60 years ago, and then was actually approved by the voters of Placer County in the 1960s. It is, it is this board's prerogative, should we so choose, to modify our ordinance to eliminate merit increases in their entirety. Let me further in the form of a question. Is it not within this board's prerogative to do that? A. And then B, if it is within this board's prerogative, what additionally, however, binds our action in that regard as it relates to essentially 90% of the merit increases that are awarded in our current 09-10 balanced budget?
Yes. Prospectively, rather than retroactively, I think the board can amend its ordinances. I would caution us, whenever the government attempts to retroactively impact or affect or change a right or entitlement created by law, the government stumbles into a dangerous position. But prospectively, I think you have that opportunity. It would be simplest to deal with your unclassified managers. I think there are a series of classified managers that also could be addressed. But for the bulk of your rank-and-file, I think the law is now clear, you can only change that through a meet and confer process with your labor groups. And since most of your membership, most employees belong to one or the other union membership, those would not be something you would unilaterally have a right to change. They are tied both to the union contracts and to your ordinances, so you couldn't unilaterally change that prospectively without labor discussions.
If I may, just quickly, just clarify that point. So again, of the 740 merit increases that were budgeted for in our balanced 09-10 budget, we, our board, only has the authority by way of ordinance to affect those 73 of the 740 that go to management classified employees, that the 667 merit increases that go to the classified employees, we do not have the authority by way of ordinance to change. But rather, it would require negotiations, which this board will be beginning very quickly, given that the current PPEO contract expires June 30th, and of course, the current DSA contract is, has expired, and we have been meeting with, or had met with them.
Yes. I mean, labor groups in the state of California have successfully defeated the imposition of such actions unilaterally by the government. There is case law on this point, and it's not surprising when you read the Millis-Brown-Meyers Act, that you would have to meet and confer with those labor groups to discuss those issues. They're not, it is a core element of the terms and conditions of employment. And so, all I can say is, for your unclassified employees, you have prospectively, I think, a great deal of flexibility. With your classified managers, you have a little less flexibility, but I think you have flexibility. But with the rank-and-file, I think, until you meet and confer and see what happens in that process. And reminding the board that that is a good faith effort, that has to be good faith bargaining. You can't just say, "We're going to do it," and then not talk to them about it. So, but that would be my advice. Getting back to the motion.
Yes.
As you and I have discussed, and I have had a chance to talk to the personnel director, that, no, the Civil Service Commission meets less frequently the board does. And secondly, this will be a transition for the Civil Service Commission and how it reports out, too. So I would like the motion to include instructions from me to work with the personnel director to get this on in a timely fashion that meets some of that transition time for the Civil Service Commission as well as for the board's agendas.
Maker of the motion, Kirk?
I agree.
Okay. We have concurrence for Supervisor Holmes and the second concurs as well. Unless there's any other discussion, we will go ahead and entertain the motion. Would all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Thank you. And it is my intention, just for my colleagues' benefit, it is my intention, in the not-too-distant future, to bring back to the board a discussion of revising the ordinance as it relates to merit increases for those that our ordinance directs that we can control. All right. We'll go ahead and move to our 920, I believe it was 920 timed item. Yes, our 920 timed item. This is a presentation of commendation congratulating the city of Colfax on the 100th anniversary of their incorporation as of February 23rd, 1910. This is being presented by District 5 Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you, Chairman Yuler. I'm really excited to be doing this today because this, today is actually the 100th anniversary, so the timing just really couldn't be better. When this was first brought to my attention, I thought, "Oh, that's great. It'll be such a wonderful ceremonial thing." But actually having it occur on the day makes it just that much more visceral and real. I know I'm going to miss a few names here, but I wanted to thank specifically a couple folks from Colfax from coming out. Nancy Hagman, Connie, Connie, I'm probably going to get your last name wrong, Heidelman. Hellman, okay. Helen Wayland, Suzanne Roberts, Charlie Grace in the back corner there, and Josh Alpine, who is current mayor, I believe, of the city of Colfax. And I'm sorry, I don't know your name. And Karen Pierce. Okay. City clerk. Sorry. My apologies. In the matter of a commendation congratulating the city of Colfax on the 100th anniversary of their incorporation, February 23rd, 1910, in Placer County. Whereas Colfax is located in the beautiful foothills of the Sierra Nevada Mountains strategically above the fog and below the snow.
In theory.
In theory. And whereas, and whereas, although miners are documented to have settled in the area as early as 1849, the original town site was surveyed and laid out in 1865 at the construction staging site known as Camp 20 on the line of the Central Pacific's transcontinental railroad. And whereas, the name Colfax was chosen in honor of Skyler Colfax, then Speaker of the House and later Vice President of the United States by the California Central Railroad executives. And whereas, for many years, Colfax flourished as a junction for the transport of passengers, agricultural goods, and gold. And whereas, in the first decade of the 20th century, the area became attractive for the development of what would become a world-renowned respite for the treatment of tuberculosis for which purpose incorporation was essential. And whereas, Colfax has always demonstrated a great sense of community through sports, education, and political endeavors, and is dedicated to the preservation of its heritage as recognized through numerous local, state, and federal acknowledgements. And whereas, Colfax was officially incorporated by popular vote on February 23rd, 1910, held its first formal meeting of the Board of Trustees, and appointed its first mayor on March 10, 1910. Now, therefore, let it be known that the Placer County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in congratulating the city of Colfax on the 100th anniversary of their incorporation, and is especially pleased to make this presentation on February 23rd, 2010, their official 100th birthday. birthday during regular session at the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting. Josh, please come forward.[605.66][605.66](Applause).
Thank you very much.[632.16][632.16](Applause). I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing our fine city and this, this fine 100-year anniversary, this big event that's gonna be, that's happening in our town. And we're gonna have wonderful events all year long. We invite you to come on up, and also the general residents of Placer County to come by and have a good time and see everything, participate in some of the wonderful events we have planned over the summer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the recognition.
Thank you. (Applause). And, can we take about a two-minute break? They wanted to do a quick photo at.
Sure, yeah, we'll go ahead and do that. Let's take a quick break, do a photo, and give the Colfax folks an opportunity to head on their way. So, we'll reconvene in about five minutes.
(Inaudible).
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 Auburn in 1997, and he worked there of course until December of this last year. Mark worked on several special assignments, including serving on the accident review, serving as the accident review officer in Auburn, and the departmental representative at the North Auburn Sheridan Rural Lincoln Municipal Advisory Councils, which is where I had the opportunity to get to know Mark. He has been a tremendous asset to the California Highway Patrol, and it is a great privilege that we give you this commendation after thirty years with the California Highway Patrol. And on a more genuine and heartfelt note, I want to point out that Mark, as much as any agency person that I have worked with, really became a member of our community at the Rural Lincoln MAC and the Sheridan MACs. He interfaced extremely well with other departmental agencies, the Sheriff's Department and Placer County Fire. And as much as anything, I want to personally thank you for during your time here not pulling me over and citing me as I
[laughter]
A little forays through the county. So Mark, it's been a great personal privilege to work with you. Really gonna miss seeing you at the MACs. Hopefully you'll come around and hang out with us still. But did a great job in representing the California Highway Patrol and the citizens of our community.
I wonder if we could get one with your family?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
[laughter]
I was already warned about that.
Although the boy can't stand in front of Robert.
Mark, why don't you introduce them while they're up here, if you would please? All right, they're good.
I've already been warned against this. She said she probably faint. This is my... The red one here, my wife Diane. This is my son Donnie, and my daughter Megan.
Thank you guys.
They're speakers.
Please.
location of the event, I told her I was really glad that this recognition or reward was taking place in the domes here, because my head was gonna swell up like the Jack in the Box CEO. And I'd like to thank Robert and all the members of the board. It's been a pleasure. It truly has been a pleasure working in a handful of the counties in the state during my career with several law enforcement agencies, to come up here to Placer County, and how truly blessed the people are that live and work in this county, and how well the county works together. Working in some of the other counties and not pointing any fingers in any of them, this county works so well together. All of the agencies, all of the departments, none of them hesitate to jump in and help each other out. And it was just a pleasure to be part of, and I can't tell you how much this means to me and what an honor it is to be recognized for what I thought was just doing my job. And thank you very much to everybody and all my buddies out there that came in, and thank you. Thank you, it's an honor.
Supervisor Holmes has...
Mark, I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciated your attendance at the North Auburn Municipal Advisory Council meetings. You always gave a very detailed report about what was going on and answered all the questions. But above all, you sometimes took the heat off of me. And I really appreciate it. But congratulations on your retirement, and we thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if, Mark, if you and your family wanted to take this opportunity, this would be a good time. I don't think your daughter really wants to sit through the rest of this. She's gonna go home and hang that thing for you. She's not gonna let that out of her hand, is she?
I'd take that to school to show why she wasn't there.
Very nice. You know what? Take daddy too, for sure. Take him with you.
Thank you.
He's got the time now.
All right, got a little bit of time before our ten o'clock timed item, so let's jump back into department head items, beginning with item number six, county executive. This is an item to approve the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association's proposed expenditure, pardon me, of budgeted infrastructure funds for bike, trail, wayfinding signage, bus shelters, and bear-proof trash cans. Good morning, Ms. Merchant.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of the board. Glad to be here this morning. The recommended expenditure of $202,260 in Tahoe TOT funds will support development of three projects, as you mentioned, in the North Lake Tahoe area. The first project includes $153,000 in matching funds for installation of five bus shelters to be served by the Tartt bus system. An equal amount of funds will be allocated from Placer County traffic mitigation fees for this project. Two shelters will be located east of Tahoe City, two in the Sunnyside area, and one in Tahoe Vista. The project is being managed by the Department of Public Works, is expected to begin construction this spring, and will be maintained through existing Tartt maintenance funding. The second project will allocate up to $20,000 to fund the purchase and installation of thirteen bear-proof trash cans at the transit shelter served by Tartt. The cans will include a recycling bin and will be maintained through existing Tartt staff. And then the third and final project will provide $29,260 in funding for the design, production, construction, and installation of twenty-four wayfinding information map signs to be located along the Tahoe City Public Utility District's nineteen miles of multipurpose trails. This allocation will be matched with $10,000 in funding from the Tahoe City PUD, and is scheduled to begin construction this spring. These projects are consistent with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association Tourism and Community Investment Master Plan, also approved by your board, and these projects were unanimously recommended by the Resort Association Board of Directors for your approval today.
Board members have any questions? Tom, you had, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Jennifer, I just want to thank you for bringing this forward today. Bus shelters are just something that come up every time I have conversations with constituents, every time I have conversations with visitors to the area, with the residents of the area. It's just been such a pressing need. I'm just very excited to see, it sounds ridiculous to be excited about bus shelters, but I'm really excited to see this coming forward, because it just, it seems to me that this is exactly the use that the TOT dollars are intended for, this benefits both the residents who live in the area and the visitors. And the better visitor experience we can offer people, including shelter from rain, sun, and snow while waiting for transit, the more they're gonna return, and the more TOT we're going to accrue as a county, which will just allow us to continue to do these exact sorts of projects. So my thanks to you, and my thanks to the Resort Association as well, for really focusing on projects that will benefit all the users at the lake.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Tom, I'd like for you, or for Jennifer, whoever you'd appropriate, to discuss just briefly the nature of the TOT funds and our agreement with the Resort Association that divides those funds, and allows for the Resort Association to provide their input, and how the county has essentially viewed these funds as dedicated funds for use in this area, as requested by the Resort Association within their budget.
Thank you, and I think that's probably important for the viewers at home, that they understand when we talk about TOT, it's bed tax, it's when people, the visitors up in the Tahoe pay whatever the room rate is, there's a percentage on top of that that is then split up in accordance with an agreement that essentially the county's had for quite some time in Eastern County. Roughly forty percent of that comes in in county general funds, supports such important services as the sheriff's costs, all other county costs. The remainder of it is kept in Tahoe where those fundings are generated, to be spent on marketing, transit, and infrastructure. Infrastructure includes many of the items that Jennifer meant. And what it is, it's part economic development and it's part community services that these fundings provide, because as Supervisor Montgomery mentioned, you put this money back in the community, you get more visitors, their experience is better, they stay longer, they're going to Placer County as opposed to El Dorado County for these experiences, creates jobs, creates stability in the community, and is a reinvestment. And so these funds are committed to the East Slope for these purposes, and that's by agreement with the Resort Association and longstanding practice, and actually why the funds were increased by voter approval in the eastern part of the county over a decade ago.
Okay, any other comments by board members? Members of the public wish to address this item? We have a motion?
Mr. Privile?
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Montgomery, second by Supervisor Holmes, to approve item number six of our agenda, the, excuse me, the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association's proposed expenditure of budgeted funds of $202,000. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? All right, we'll move on to Health and Human Services, Children's System of Care. Approve or submission, application for renewal of Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration Community Mental Health Services Block Grant for fiscal year nine, ten, in the amount of $688,080. Authorized Director of Health and Human Services to sign the application, all documentation reports, and certifications required. Please.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, Richard Connect, Children's System of Care Director. For the past fifteen years, the Adult and Children's Systems of Care Teams have jointly accessed this federal grant to support the delivery of a host of services to Placer, children, families, and adults. These services help to prevent the need for more costly residential and inpatient care, and they include housing and related support and counseling for otherwise homeless, chronically ill adults. These services, or these types of services, support a reduction in county costs that would otherwise be associated with inpatient care. Last year, more than three hundred residents were positively impacted by these grant dollars and the services associated with them. The total dollars available is $688,000, and no county match is required. We seek your authorization to submit the application and continue to deliver these services, and be happy to take any questions.
Board members have any questions? Any members of the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, any more motion?
Second.
Motion Supervisor Holmes, the silver was Supervisor Montgomery, Supervisor Wigan with the bronze on that one, unfortunately. He made the podium by virtue of the fact Rocky's not here, and I can't, and I can't do the motions. All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none?
Thank you.
Yes, in the spirit of the games in British Columbia. We'll go ahead and adjourn as Placer County Board of Supervisors convene as the Placer County Redevelopment Agency Board in order to take up item number eight. Mr. Laboo is gonna be presenting this morning, huh?
Thank you, good morning. The item before you is a reporting requirement that came out of the state's last budget that they approved. Part of that budget was a taking of redevelopment tax increment funds from all over, from all the redevelopment agencies in California, including ours. So part of the requirement of that budget bill was that each redevelopment agency needs to report, in our case, to the auditor, how we intend to make that payment to the state by no later than March first. So that's why we're here to give to you just that report, that we are prepared to make a payment of $3,193,331 of discretionary tax increment funds. Those funds are available within our existing budget. We already knew this was coming when we approved the budget, your last budget that you approved for the redevelopment agency, and this was set aside for that purpose. We also know that there is a lawsuit pending to challenge this taking, and so the payments have not been made yet. They're not required to be made until May, and if the suit goes one way or the other, we will or will not make those payments, depending on how that goes.
Mr. Miller.
If I could just add a PC, the 3.5 million roughly, that's only out of the non-affordable housing set aside that's redevelopment funds.
Correct.
So it affects the county's redevelopment agency's opportunity to fund other types of projects that are non-residential. Is that right, Jim?
Correct, and we've been able to take those funds from existing reserves. It does certainly limit our opportunities to do a lot of things in the future, particularly in the North Tahoe and the Sunset areas, but we have not had to stop any of the projects that we have actively going right now.
And just for clarification, this is in fact the state taking redevelopment funds away from local governments for us to the tune of just over $3 million?
Correct, and in our case, in the last state budget, you noticed, I'm sure, that there was the state borrowing funds of different types from local municipalities and special districts. The one difference to that pattern was in redevelopment, where it's not a borrowing, it's a taking, where we, they don't pay it back.
Thank you. Supervisor Wigan, did you want to?
Yeah, just specifically for failure by the state to balance its budget.
Emphasis noted. Thank you. All right, any board members have any other comments? Any members of the public wish to address this item? Seeing none?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Supervisor Holmes, silver goes to Supervisor Wigan this time. On approval, item eight, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none?
Thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery, still at the starting line. Waiting to get out of the box.
I have the wrong glass.
Nice choice of sport. Okay, we will now adjourn as the Placer County Redevelopment Agency Board reconvene as Placer County Board of Supervisors. Move on to item number nine, and I don't see Sheriff Bonner here, thank God, because otherwise we'd have to look at him instead of...
Thank you.
Barbara, good morning.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Barbara Bassana with the Sheriff's Department. Not all the news about the budget is about taking money away. This morning, we have an opportunity to, from the American Recovery Act, the Anti-Drug Abuse Recovery Act, for $313,492. This money is allocated to backfill those positions within our Special Investigations Unit that are currently not filled. The Steering Committee met last Thursday, and allocation of those funds have been approved. What that will fund will be the backfilling of the CalMet investigators that are currently not fully funded, backfill funding for the probation officer that is not totally funded, providing some funds for the DA Investigator Prosecutor that are currently not reimbursed by the, by the grant. We have funds for Health and Human Services for their participation with access. We have funds to backfill the Auburn police officer who is not currently funded, as well as overtime and toxicology costs for, for that program. So time is of the essence. The grant period, even though it begins March first, and the grant is due shortly thereafter, requires your board's approval for the grant submittal. It is a two-year grant, although we really plan to spend the funds within next year's budget and begin those expenditure funds July first. With that, we ask that your approval and authorization for the chair and Sheriff Bonner to execute those documents.
Questions by more members? Seeing none, any questions by any members of the public?
Overapproval of staff recommendation?
Second.
Motion Supervisor Wigan, second Supervisor Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And item number three on our agenda is our ten o'clock timed item. It's my understanding Supervisor Montgomery that you'd like for the board to perhaps continue this item in order to entertain it when we next meet in Tahoe?
Yeah, I think, two things. One, I think it would be important to have a full board and panel, because this is an appeal, and I think having this at our next Tahoe meeting, which I believe to be April twentieth, would allow people to come speak locally, both pro and con on this, and just allow us to have a better understanding of the local issue.
Okay. In terms of, and Tony, perhaps you can help me, I may be begging the board's indulgence in terms of the exact date that we do our Tahoe meeting, because right now it's looking like I might have a conflict on the twentieth of April. So if your intent is to have the full board there, and I'd be more than happy to be there to hear this item, I might be looking for the board's indulgence to perhaps move that April twentieth meeting that we have scheduled either a week earlier or a week later, depending on whatever works. So obviously I'll work with, or the clerk will.
Yes, we do need to continue, and I believe to a date certain. Would that be...
Or can it be renoticed?
Oh, we can renotice it.
Okay.
And since it's gonna be heard of in Tahoe, renoticing it might not be a bad idea anyway, since we've changed location and everything else.
Yeah, I'd like to put on the record, I think I saw either an email or memo from Mr. Caldwell indicating that he agreed to the continuance, so that's on the record that the applicant has requested in the board's motion.
Okay. So Tony, at this point, I'm not inclined to do anything by way of staff report or open the public hearing. I know it's been our practice sometimes to open the public hearing and then continue the public hearing at this point, given that I don't see anybody that I would identify as a member of the public that's interested in testifying.
My, my recommendation always is to continue the public hearing before you commence testimony. Sometimes that recommendation isn't followed, but, but it's my recommendation, just make a motion to continue it to a date uncertain at the next available meeting in Tahoe.
Okay, and I believe that was Supervisor Montgomery's motion?
That is my motion.
Perfect.
Second.
Snuck right into the wire there. Second by Supervisor Wigan, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Okay, we will adjourn to closed session at this point and come back for our eleven o'clock. There is no other action or no other, there are no other items for our board to consider at this point other than closed session and then our eleven o'clock timed item, so we will not reconvene until that eleven o'clock timed item. Tony, is there anything that you need to say as we go into closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The board will take up the items on page three of its agenda, item number ten, dealing with litigation. There's two existing litigation matters listed. We will also, while in closed session, discuss labor negotiations, and we will report back later. later.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The board did meet in closed session. It took up the Peter Hayward versus Kenny Aplacer matter and the First National Insurance Company versus Kenny Aplacer matter. Received information updates from council and gave direction to council. No other action was taken. With regards to labor negotiations, the board received a brief update with regards to PPEO matters, and that closes this report.
Thank you, Tony. And just a reminder, as Supervisor Wagan pointed out earlier, Supervisor Rockholm is not here today due to shoulder surgery that he underwent first thing this morning. And doubtful as to his return for our next meeting on the second, I believe, at this point. Okay, we will go ahead and proceed with our 11 o'clock timed item. This is a strategic budget and policy briefing by the CEO's office where we will discuss a number of items.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members. I'm Jeff Bell from the County Executive Office, and I'm here to present the strategic budget and policy briefing for 2010-11. I'll hold on a second while the screen sets up, thank you. The key issues for this morning, there are three. We're asking to receive preliminary direction from your board for the development of the 2010-11 budget, to receive direction on labor adjustments recommended for management employees, and then to receive direction for further engagement with the Placer Public Employees Organization to discuss options for comparable labor adjustments and employee layoffs. So these three key areas for today. Our outline for this morning, we'd like to start with the background of prior board actions, to go into some of the economic and budgetary challenges that we face, and to talk about budget development for 2010-11, address how we plan to address some of the anticipated shortfalls for 2010-11, look at some of the future budget projections, and look at some of the other policy considerations for the coming year. Heading into the background section, as we talked about when we came and saw you in December, our economy has continued to decline, and this isn't a surprise, I'm sure, to your board. The reducing of the property and sales tax revenues at this time, as well as sales tax revenues while our service demands have increased and our costs have increased, has been a considerable burden. Meanwhile, as you know, when you look down in Sacramento and you see what came out in the January governor's budget, and as has been affirmed by the LAO's analysis, deficits continue to decimate the state budget. And they have found new and additional ways to transfer that burden onto local governments. In fact, if we look at some of our regional jurisdictions, we can see some of the significant layoffs that have hit some of those other jurisdictions. Some of them have been quite severe. In fact, if we even see this morning's paper, we can see some of our local jurisdictions seeing some significant challenges that they're facing. As you can see, for the third straight year, for us, it will not be business as usual. But through prudent planning, Placer County is in better shape than many localities throughout the state. In recognition of the economic conditions that we have faced over the past several years, your board has reduced spending plans, in fact, in each of the last four years. Implementing a hiring freeze in 2007 has in fact resulted in 260 fewer funded filled positions in the county. That's a 10% reduction in funded filled positions in the county. You've required the prioritization of ongoing operational reductions that has resulted in sustainable savings for the county. When we look back over the past couple of years, we see the directing staff to address a mid-year in December of 2008-9, 9.5 million dollar revenue shortfall, eliminating 76 positions from the allocation listing, an additional four, I'm sorry, directing the four days of office closures to save $2 million, and in 2009-10, an additional 12 days of office closures for the following fiscal years for additional 6.5 million. The budget that was adopted this year, 9.4% smaller than the prior years, or $81.5 million smaller. These combined actions, reducing costs, reducing expenditures, have put us in a better position for the economic climate that we have faced. However, while your board has acted, the state is still mired in deficits. And although it's not the $42 billion deficit that we saw last year, we do see the $20 to $23 billion deficit this year that they are facing. The fiscal projections that we're going to show you in the next several slides for the county do not include adjustments for the state impacts. But what they do, but what we do consider are other at-risk state-funded programs that could affect tens of millions of dollars in county programs. And we will keep you apprised as the year goes on with the impacts that the state will have on our county programs. We do know, for example, that what was proposed yesterday only impacted about, yesterday down in Sacramento, only impacted about $2 billion of the $20 to $23 billion shortfall that they're facing. Turning back to Placer County, the budget development process to date really began last September when we conducted, when the county executive conducted multiple all-staff meetings on the current year budget, identifying what was the current year process, the current year budget, and where we stood. Meetings continued with direct consultation with management and confidential staff on fiscal solutions that went throughout the fall. Then, budget development and creation of 3% and 5% reduction scenarios began this January with the rollout of the budget for 2010-11. We're continuing into department head meetings which are currently being scheduled for March. If I could come back to the management team meetings that I just touched on a moment ago. Ten separate management meetings were held this beginning in the fall to gather input from management employees throughout the county. At these meetings, staff received financial information on pension, health benefits, and the county budget, and received surveys, two rounds of surveys as a matter of fact, where they could rank their preferences. They ranked these preferences, and indeed, in both instances, turned in over 60%, I'm sorry, over 60% of management staff turned those surveys back in. And the last of these meetings, which was on December 17th, following that meeting, turned in preferences resulting in $1.1 million in labor adjustments that would include a recommendation that would have nine MTO days, revised health insurance cost-sharing formula of 80% county, 20% employee, no COLA, and of course, there would be no vacation cash out. Now, if this solution were extended to both PPEO, management, and confidential employees, all funds told it would be a $7.6 million savings for the county. If I could now turn to general and public safety fund budget development for this year. Like last year, staff is coming to your board early, recognizing the economic conditions that we face. And like last year, we recognize that our current budget projections are based on preliminary information. But the items that we're coming to your board with are, will shape the budget development for next year, and it's important that we get them to you in time to be able to achieve full year savings beginning on July 1st, which is why we're coming to you for this early direction. Now, we have constrained saving, or, I'm sorry, savings, constrained spending over the last several budget cycles, and this, of course, has greatly diminished our discretionary resources as a resources as a county. We recognize this year that significantly deeper reductions will be required, and this will include labor cost adjustments. When we came and saw you in December, we estimated that the shortfall that could be coming in 2010-11 would be about $20 million, or about $16 million if we used the planned use of reserves of about $4 million, as was adopted in the current year budget. But since then, a number of factors have changed. Our estimate of secure property taxes has since gotten worse. We think it's going to decline further. Additionally, sales tax revenues, we also project will decline further, as well as some other revenues. So when combined, we think that the combined general and public safety fund deficit will be about $23.6 million versus $23 million. Or if we used the same level of planned reserves as we've used in the current year, it would be about a $19.6 million deficit. This estimated shortfall is broken up into two categories: general fund, about $15.7 million, and the public safety fund, the $7.9 million, for a total of $23.6 million. Closing the $23.6 million shortfall has three key components: use of general fund reserves, as we just discussed a moment ago, continuing that planned approach, expenditure reductions of both an ongoing and one-time basis, and required labor adjustments. And if we could break that down a little further, the budget options that are proposed include the reserve cancellation of $4 million, short-term and internal charge reductions of about $1 million, short-term policy reductions of $3.3 million, long-term budget reductions of $5.2, labor cost reductions of $6.3, and other policy reductions of $3.8. If I could briefly go into each one of those. Again, recognizing the use of reserves should be used judiciously, and on a, and recognizing that they're for emergency circumstances, we recognize bringing this to you is of a limited nature. We're only requesting this for two additional years. However, the circumstances that we find ourselves in, we believe warrant coming to you for the use of $4 million of them, again, in the coming fiscal year. As growth in revenue comes in the next couple of years, we do recommend a phasing out of the use of reserves. Short-term or internal charge reductions, we, this is the use of the, over the next two to three additional years, of about $1 million in this case. This is a plan developed a couple of years ago to draw down our internal charge reserves. There's about $1.5 million in this area. And of course, this, as you well know and the Board, reduces the, reduces the offsets in this area, allow departments who have lost revenue in other areas to reduce the charges that their chart, reduces their charges, thereby offsetting the revenues that they have been, that their revenues that have gone down in other areas reduces their costs. Other short-term policy reductions, primarily recommending maintaining our OPEB contributions at the current year level. This will allow us to still maintain our annual required contribution in the coming fiscal year. This would mean we would maintain departments' contributions at the same level as they are in the current fiscal year, but we still would maintain our annual required contribution in the coming fiscal year. Long-term recommend, long-term recommendations here, including $5.2 million. This would include the reductions in reassignment costs that were utilized in the '09-'10 fiscal year, also uses operating contingency funds in both the general fund and the public safety Then, turning to the 3% and 5% expenditure reduction scenarios, obviously, these are being developed right now. This is something we haven't had a chance to have any conversations yet with departments on, and this is something we would be considering, we would need to take into consideration the service implications associated with this, and consider in light of what is happening with the state budget. These are, these are choices that would need to be made following those meetings in March with the departments, which are designed to discuss the options. Obviously, when these come, when the 3% and 5% reductions come in, we see them in terms of the least to most severe impacts they would have on services in the county, and we would want to have those taken in the context of the impacts that they will have on county services and departmental budgets. Finally, labor adjustments. Labor adjustments recommended at $6.3 million of the proposed budget options. Management and confidential, we spoke to a few moments ago. There was the scenario that we showed with the nine MTO days and the 80-20 scenario for health benefits and then no COLA. This shows the $6.3 million of the proposed budget options. PPEO represented component of labor adjustments here would be $5 million. Labor adjustments are proportionate to the above-listed ratios and could save 90 to 100 county jobs in 2010-11. In addition to those labor adjustments, beyond those that were just seen in the previous slide, there may be additional labor considerations to balance this year's budget, and they would be due to some of the following considerations: lack of work in some areas, yet-to-be-identified state reductions. Again, as you just saw yesterday, they've only identified about $2 billion of the $20 to $23 billion that they have identified so far as a state deficit. There's still a long way to go. Additionally, any redirections to sustaining prioritized county services could also affect labor choices that would need to be made this year. If I could turn now to future-year budget projections. Our recommendations so far help, but do not eliminate the deficits in our outline year. Many of our recommendations are one-time, including the labor adjustments that we identified. As has been evident in previous presentations, our cost savings task force analysis and implementation of those cost savings ideas will identify money in '10-11 and beyond, and attrition in retirements will have an impact on future years. Implementation of the recommended policies discussed further in this presentation can also identify additional savings. As we look at the coming fiscal year, we see that the $23.6 million shortfall that we have identified in 2010-11 has increased to $32.2 million. This is primarily in three components: due to increases in expenditures, a continued decrease in revenues, and a decrease in our anticipated fund balance. Utilizing some of the short-term, or recognizing that some of the short-term reductions will continue forward, but not very many of them, recognizing that some of the labor adjustments, primarily the health, 80-20 component, could go forward, will roll forward to the tune of about $2 million, and anticipating that some of our other policy options that are yet to be identified, perhaps 80% of them, could roll forward to the tune of about $3 million. We anticipate that about $16.7 million could be the shortfall anticipated in the coming fiscal year, should we still utilize $4 million of reserves in the coming fiscal year following 2010-11, which is, of course, 2011-12. If I could now turn to long-term structural change. Staff does intend to return to your Board in a future meeting with additional concepts, and this goes back to the slide a couple back, where we intended to discuss additional options for the future, to talk about restructuring, service delivery, and other ideas that can further address that $16.7 million shortfall in coming future years. Those include restructuring our county service delivery, permanently constraining the number of county employees, and increasing our car share of pension and healthcare benefits, as well as others. And we intend to come back to your Board at a future date with more of these ideas. That includes, or concludes my prepared remarks, and I'm happy to go back and answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Holmes?
I know we've securitized $11 million that the state was going to withhold in Prop 1A funds. Where is that in the picture? Where is that $11 million going to show up at?
That's being restored, actually. We are, that is coming back into our coffers. We are, we have securitized that, and that's coming back in this year.
Going into the general fund, or?
Yes, sir. The preliminary plans for that are, half of it will show up as fund balance, roughly $5.5 million, and we are earmarking tentatively $5.5 to offset the new jail costs. But that would be up to your Board's authority on, in the future.
Okay. And then you mentioned the reduction in reassignment costs. Can someone clarify how would we do that, or what are those reassignment costs?
I remember the reassignment process, and it predominantly affected the land use departments in that the, we had a decline in work activities that were others supported by building permits or land use development permits, recognizing especially in, in land development, there's always general plan and other type of works, but the staffing has been historically funded to that level in the past to permit activity, and that declined. The, what your Board authorized, and we worked diligently with Local 39 to implement, was reassignment of those individuals. Some of those individuals, in fact, applied for other county jobs and became permanent occupiers of jobs in other county departments, as say, somebody retired out of those departments. There was also a number of folks who were reassigned to other positions in other county departments, but they retained their seniority, their pay rates, and everything else, as if they were a member of the department, the land use department that they left. The departments that received those employees had a certain amount of money, in some cases other revenues, in some cases, general fund monies, predominantly general fund monies, I would say, that supported those costs. But many of those employees were overemployed, or in terms of compensated for what the reassigned job was. So that ended up as an $800,000 cost to the general fund to offset those, those reassigned employees, less than what those departments were paying for that base rate. So you might have had a, a building inspector who was reassigned as a building crafts mechanic, and that general fund money from facility service carried 60% or 80% of the cost of that employee, where the general fund made up that difference. And so what we're looking to do is, those departments now that are predominantly the receiver of those folks, they are suffering the same kind of budget constraints, or the lack of work in their departments based upon having, funding to continue those positions, plus our general fund is suffering even greater this year, so that $800,000 plus is evaporating. What we're hoping to do is transition as many of those folks into permanent full-time positions in other funds or other areas, and have them, in fact, apply for those jobs, because that reassignment is not sustainable. On kind of a good front, I heard from our chief building inspector that he's seen a little bit of that permit activity increase, so we expect to maybe have one or two of those building inspectors back to the building department based upon that work activity. But that's in a capsule what that's about.
Okay, great, thanks.
It's Jennifer.
Thank you, Jeff. I wanted to make sure I understood that the, the 3% and 5% budget reduction scenarios have not been turned in yet?
That is correct.
Okay, so we haven't really been able to evaluate those as part of this process?
We have not.
Okay. On slide number 10, recommended management solutions. Under the staff recommendations, it says if this solution were extended to PPEO, management and confidential, $7.6 million in savings would be achieved through all funds. How does this relate, or does it, to the current agreement with the DSA and their structure?
It does not.
And have we factored the DSA numbers into this budget?
The DSA, I'm sorry?
The, the DSA is separate from what we're talking about right here on slide 10. Have we, have we factored the DSA numbers into this proposed budget for next year?
Let, let me jump into that just briefly. Is it the 80-20 costs that are shown in the future years are, remember, DSA was imposed within 80-20. Those are factored into that. The DSA contract also caps some of their special pays and a contribution to PERS. Those were permanent imposed conditions unless they be negotiated away in the future. So those savings are carried forward into the future year as well, and that's how the DSA is reflected in here. But the DSA is not reflected with the nine MTO days, nor the COLA, because their COLA is set by Measure F.
Right, and it was mainly, my question was really mainly about the MTO days. Just a couple more clarifying questions here, if I can find them. Getting back to Supervisor Holmes' question about reductions in reassignment costs, that, that's about 20 people, is that correct, roughly? That's the figure?
Yes.
Okay, that's it for now, thank you.
Supervisor Wegamp.
Jeff, could you, you referred to declines in property and sales tax revenues in excess of what was expected. Could somebody describe that more fully for me?
Yes, we were earlier anticipating, earlier we were seeing that commercial real estate was going down, and back in December, we had some preliminary information on commercial real estate. Since then, we've had further conversations, as we think it's going to decline even further. And so, when we came and talked to you in December, we had some very preliminary estimates on that, and since then, we're seeing the percentages we think are going to decline even further in that. Additionally, sales tax estimates that we had anticipated for the coming fiscal year are going to decline even further. When combined, the commercial real estate declines, sales tax declines, when combined, warrant us to think that our revenues are going to come down much more precipitously than we had earlier anticipated. Percentage is around 5%.
Five?
Yes.
For both combined?
Well, sales tax, about 21% now is, is what we're projecting. Property tax declined 5%.
Yeah, and if I could jump in here, Holly Hines, under the County Executive Office. Earlier, we had a 2% decline, which was really kind of a placeholder at the time. As, as Jeff noted, the additional impacts and reductions are really looking at the commercial market, but also some of the appeals that are being realized on an ongoing basis that are further reducing what our revenue is, so it's not always commensurate with what the reduction in assessed value would otherwise be. So we will anticipate seeing some of those impacts as well on the property tax.
Kind of brings up something, I guess, to rethink about, if nothing else. Isn't it accurate that then, after those declines, according to Prop 13, property appreciations can only max out at 2% a year, right?
Let me, I'm, I'm going to say the answer, and I believe there's a representative from the assessor's office, but basically what happens is, if it's a, an assessed value that has been reduced, or if the assessed value's been reduced, that can come up more quickly than 2%. It's only those-
Fail.
Right, right.
So at least that difference, then, I'm presuming that as we go forward with our budgets, with the 2% cap on resales, we will never recover where we were before those monies with the 2% cap?
If we recover, it will be over a longer extended time, we would think, mostly because as sales occur, they're being reappraised or revalued at a lower level-
Right.
-than what they had been really at our height.
Presuming that that, of course, would be factored into our future budget efforts.
Yeah, and, and 5% right now, we see as a conservative number, and I'll, I'll tell you that right up front. I don't think it's unrealistic, but really going into it, and as our financial policies dictate, for those sorts of revenues that tend to be volatile or fluctuate with economic conditions, they very specifically indicate that we'll make- conditions, they very specifically indicate that we'll make conservative estimates. I don't know that this is going to be that conservative. Certainly, we would like to see property values a little better than that, and that our revenue will not be affected by 5%. But, you know, I think it's a, it's a prudent for this time. I mean, as things go on, we'll refine those revenue estimates, but for this time, when we're really, you know, well ahead of the next fiscal year, I think it, it's a prudent sort of estimate.
Then I had a question, and I apologize, I'm trying to find the slide. I've got it in my staff report, but you showed the slide that had the, the year-over-year. I want to clarify that what your slide shows, pardon me, it's page 64 of our staff report, that has the box, it looks at 10, 11, and then 11, 12, your projected shortfall for 11, 12. I don't know why I'm not finding.
The slide with 11, 12 on it?
Yeah.
It's 26.
Thank you, there it is. Just want to be, be clear, that that, what we're looking at is a, a progressive deficit to 32 million, not a year-over-year new $32 million hole, once the $23 million hole was filled, correct? You're looking at a cumulative report there-
That is correct.
-adding up to a 32 million over the two years, and we're, we're saying that if we take appropriate steps, that 32 becomes 16.
Right.
It is reduced.
Right, yes.
And, and I, I think it's important, without belaboring the point too much, I think it's important to point out, the steps that this board took last year in meeting our commitment that we avoid layoffs, I don't think it has been widely acknowledged that the general fund, in order to avoid layoffs, did in fact supplement expenses incurred by departments to bring into their department employees that were otherwise employed typically by SEDRA, or most commonly by SEDRA, and then reassigned, and that those reassignments came with a cost to the general fund of almost a million dollars, but that was part of our board's good faith effort to meet the, the no layoff commitment that we had made. Any other questions by any of the board members? Seeing none, this would be the time that we, unless staff has anything else they want to say to wrap up, okay. Then at this point, we will go ahead and open this up for public comment. I know that there are a number of elected officials that have been here since early this morning, who are anxious to speak, and I see Janine Windushausen rising to the challenge, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here with my colleagues, the other elected department heads this morning, as you mentioned, and we appreciate the work that the CEO has put in on the upcoming budget. We're requesting, however, that the board defer all action on this agenda item to allow us to review the item. We just received these, the information for this item over the weekend, and we would like the opportunity to review the recommendations, especially in the context of completing our budget as the week proceeds. Those are, many of them are due back this Friday. And also to consider and evaluate the possibility of being able to offer the board maybe some other alternatives for addressing some of the budget issues presented here today. And most specifically, we are concerned about the broad authority in item four of this item regarding layoffs, and would like the opportunity to evaluate the potential for impacts with regard to any layoffs, and what that means in terms of service reductions to, to the public, and again, in the context of completing our budgets, any mitigations that we might be able to offer. And so we are requesting that the board give us the opportunity to review the, the recommendations made here today, and a little more thoroughly, and what that means in terms of impacts to our budgets, and how we might be able to offer some potential mitigations. Thank you.
Again, I apologize for not returning your call yesterday.
Not a problem. Good morning. Please excuse my voice, I'm just getting over the flu. I just want to say I concur with everything that Janine said, and I think it's also important that we have a full board when we make this decision. There are a lot of important issues that are in this resolution, and many of our, of the electives I've been, been working on, been thinking about this issue and working this issue, so I think that we have some good ideas that we'd like to have the opportunity to present to you. Thank you.
And I guess just for the record, we should reflect that the first speaker was the elected treasurer of tax collector, Janine Windushausen, and the second speaker was the elected clerk. Recorder, registrar, voters, Jim McCauley. And I'll let you introduce yourself, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm the third speaker, Brad Fanocchio, elected district attorney. My business address being 10810 Justice Center Drive in Roseville. I also feel that more time is necessary to review more thoroughly the actions that are requested. I noticed the board itself had several questions as this was presented. I think that's telling in and of itself. I saw these materials for the first time on Friday. That was a furlough Friday. I had no secretary, and I have had very little time to review the materials thoroughly. I think deferring this matter today will allow that review and analysis, and it may actually create a situation where other ideas, other options, other suggestions that could have a significant positive impact on the budget could be brought forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the front row want to get up at this point? No? Okay, seeing none, any other members of the public wish to address the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Chuck Thiel from Stationary Engineers, Local 39, representing the Placer Public Employees Organization. And I'm here to speak to you regarding the recommendations contained in the county executive budget item. To begin with, the union as opposed to the recommendations placed for, before you today, at least most of them. The employees of Placer County have shouldered a huge amount of the burden during this budget crisis, and they've already taken steps to lower the county's costs. They've agreed to pay more for their healthcare. They have entered into agreements that lowered the OPEB liability from $342 million to $180 million. They've agreed to furloughs, just to name a few. In the meantime, due to staffing reductions with the hiring freeze, layoffs, fewer work hours, and the elimination of temporary employees and extra help, the employees of Placer County are working harder than ever before. While county staff and work hours have been reduced, the need for services has increased in many sectors due to this budget crisis. To ask employees to give more is asking too much. There are other cost savings measures that can be used to save jobs. In previous negotiations with the county, many of these cost savings measures were dismissed, even though they provided immediate and real cost savings. We were told that despite the demonstrable savings, it was against the quote-unquote "philosophy" of the board. We ask that the board reconsider the philosophy, and instead consider PERS or retirement options and voluntary severance incentives. This will encourage a reduction enforced by those who can most afford it, while minimizing the impact to families, our communities, and the local businesses that they support. Furthermore, before making hasty decisions that will have a long-lasting adverse effect on working families in our community and our local economy, the county should be looking ahead to other revenue streams that are on the horizon, such as the Middle Fork Project and the revenue that that will generate as soon as 2013. Lastly, in light of the findings in the recent SEDRA audit conducted by the auditor controller, the union is asking the board to suspend any other decision on these board items and direct the auditor controller to conduct more such audits before laying off or attacking the income of Placer County's rank-and-file employees. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no takers, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board, and Jeff, did you have some comments in wrap-up, in conclusion? Okay, any board members have any questions or comments at this point? All right, there are four action items that, oh, there are more than four action items.
There are seven, seven action items.
There they are, there are the other three. Seven. I'm going to suggest that we look at these one at a time, and I'm going to entertain a conversation among the board on them, one at a time, to see if the board has a, an appetite to move forward on any of the seven, all of the seven, or if there might be one or two of these, based on what we've heard from some of the other elected officials in the county, that the board might decide that at this point, it would be better to defer for a meeting or two. Supervisor Wagnant?
I don't have any great specificity, Kirk, but I, I just think you maybe kind of step back and get a response from county exec's office, and, and we've heard specific requests from our elected department heads to defer action. And I guess, a thought that I have as it relates to that is that we are in a multi-year process that's been going on for at least three years in Placer County, and looking at deteriorating budget circumstances. And I see that continuing for some time. So if we were to defer action on any or all, what are the pulse points that are more specific or of concern to the county exec's office? Because I think the ball that we have to keep our eye on is that as we move forward over the next several years, we need to do that to the fullest extent in a team environment, with a key focus being trying to retain the highest level of county services, but at a sustainable cost. Clearly, that cannot be done, as you've mentioned so many times, Kirk, without having a sustainable cost of our wages and benefit package, because that is the predominant cost to, to government and, and obviously, Placer County government. Somehow, we have to change the mix of what it is costing per employee in Placer County to be able to continue through this budget cycle. So there are some more pressing, short-term decisions that need to be made, and there are some other more general, generic, broader policy questions that I think we can engage in, keeping in mind that we're going to be doing this unfortunately, I think, for, for some time, but we need to do it with the fullest extent of team participation as possible. So I guess I'd like a reaction just generally from the county exec to that thought.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you. First of all, time is not on the county's side. You know, July 1 comes upon us, there's many, many actions that have to be put in place to have the county on a, on a sound fiscal basis to start effective July 1. Many decisions have to be made by your board, you have time to make those, but direction is incumbent to get to that end game. I look back into last year, the courage that your board had last February, same timeframe, same set of directions, very minimal change here from what was last year. What happened? Your board took that step forward, you put the county in good footing effective July 1, we had a sound budget, we were able to move forward in, during this fiscal year. And so I would encourage your board to move forward on this. I understand that there is probably some concern, especially relative to the 3% and the 5% type of budget impacts that have been asked the departments to prepare for. Quite frankly, those have been prepared not to balance what you have before you today, but to anticipation of what the state may bring to your doorsteps. So we need to know, we need to go through that process. You need to prioritize eventually, and should the state do that, what are your high priority services that have lesser cuts versus more cuts, depending upon what the state of California does to you, or does to us. Without moving forward on a basic platform to solve our ills as we see today, you're in greater risk for the future once the state does that. Again, time is not on our side. We have finance committee, we encourage cooperative efforts by the departments to come forward with recommendations. I shared essentially what was going to be the request here at department head meeting earlier this month, and went over in some detail on what was going to be proposed here today. Again, no secrets, very similar platform as last year. In terms of more or less crucial actions that may or may not be in the board item, you know, the, I've heard some angst about the delegated authority for direct layoffs under Chapter 3. That could be an item that clearly returns to your board at a future meeting. It's, again, something that was done last year, it simply makes all the parties come to the table and talk about what may be for us, and move forward in that. That can be delayed in terms of particular action. I think your board had also earlier today talked about the suspension of merit increases for all county employees. My understanding of your conversation, that seemed to be of interest to your board, although there was no action pertaining to that. I think it's very imperative also to move forward with the concepts for further development about the future outlying years. Your board is, as of last year, took almost $35 million of our, out of our collective budgets. You were able to do it without any layoffs, it was because you took early and quick action. You took action last December, not December of '09, but December '08, where I remember very clearly somebody in the audience speaking that, why don't we do it like Sacramento County, where they just, they deferred purchase of phone systems, they double-sided the paper, and by God, they were taking cost-effective measures. That county laid off 800 folks, and now they, in today's paper, they're talking about laying off another over 100 for this fiscal year, and probably 1,000 for next fiscal year. Again, I look at time, repeated message. Time is not on our side to collectively get our house in order, recognizing the state of California will have some impacts to us. We really need to focus on, should that occur, what's a priority in services? How do we sustain the meaningful county services that we provide to the citizens? When that happens, not if it happens, but when and to what degree? To dally further along is not going to put us in a good position. This is tough. This is the third year of this kind of action. There are definitely impacts on the employees, there's definitely impacts on departments in terms of services. To focus on the cooperativeness of trying to pull together the team effort in terms of moving forward with recommendations, we do have time to do that, especially the prioritization of services. But to delay to an unspecified date, to come back maybe and have items presented to you, I'd say that will just, is a road fought with errors. We need to do that in terms of having a collective action that moves forward. I would encourage those folks who are so inclined to come up with other ideas, to take advantage of the communication that's already there in terms of presenting those items forward. And in fact, those items may be more the savers when the state impacts are known, as opposed to our own budget work that we have before us. Hopefully, I didn't go on too far, but.
Thank you, Tom. Supervisor Holmes, please.
I have to agree with Mr. Miller. This county has done a great job over the past few years dealing with its budget deficits. As I go out in the community and speak, I'm always telling people that this budget process is a year-long process. We start early on trying to get a handle on everything. I know our budget, our CEO's office works hard. I come in here on weekends and see some of them, I won't mention any names, are in here, you know, working on projects, putting the numbers together. But time is of the essence. We, we've done a good job by getting ahead of this in the past, and I think we should move forward.
Jennifer, you have a comment?
Yes, I, I have to say that I'm extremely uncomfortable with the idea of moving forward on this without Supervisor Rockholm here. I, I think it does a real disservice to his community to not have his voice be part of this process. And while I understand Tom and Supervisor Holmes' concern about timing, July 1 is four months from now. I, I sincerely believe that as important as these issues are, they are important enough that all our board should be here to make the decision about them. And that's really where I stand. I think we need to have all five of us here.
Okay, thank you. In that vein, I believe Supervisor Rockholm put together some thoughts on paper. Tony, I'm going to defer to you. It was handed to Mr. Miller that if the opportunity presented itself, that Supervisor Rockholm's statement be read. Do you see any problem with that happening?
No.
Okay.
It's not a vote, just a-
Understood, yes.
Yes, Supervisor Rockholm did contact me, actually it was weighing on his mind over the weekend, and asked me to specifically read a statement, and I do have copies of that, should anybody be interested in that. And it was really more in pertaining to one of the items in front of the board. In my conversations with him, he was supportive of the overall actions, but he wanted a written statement in terms of one particular one. And it's regarding wage increases. Supervisor Rockholm states, "I wish I could be there to discuss this important issue, but shoulder surgery precludes that possibility. As I said earlier this year, wage increases must cease while our county struggles with budget challenges. With our unionized employees, of course, we'll need to negotiate this change, but the only responsible course of action is to impose a restriction as we plan the next budget. I am told this action could save the county more than $215,000 in management savings, and over $1.5 million in total savings if the unions agree to this change. As county ordinances now stay on these increases are to be given when employees reach certain milestones, thus making the decisions fair and equal for everyone. We need to change the rules by rewriting or suspending the ordinance-" We need to change the rules by rewriting or suspending the ordinances as we prepare next year's budget to reflect an across-the-board wage freeze. Our CEO, county council, and some managers have already voluntarily turned down increases, my aide Linda Brown amongst them. I have reluctantly voted to approve raises for managers during these difficult times, even though I propose freezing the increases earlier this year. I believe we should not arbitrarily deny certain employees' pay increases they rightfully anticipate receiving, given the county's ordinances and past practices. It is especially inappropriate to deny an increase for political purposes. By imposing the freeze with our new budget, we assure that all employees are affected equally within the new budget year. I support taking whatever action is necessary to make it clear that all wage increases for all employees will be frozen until further notice."
Okay, thank you.
What I have heard is two supervisors expressing their opinion that the board needs to move forward, and one supervisor expressing the opinion that we should wait until all five members are here. I concur that we need to move forward. However, I am comfortable holding off on item number four, which is the resolution to give the countywide electeds some more time to have their suggestions be heard by both the CEO's office as well as board members before we implement on number four. And so what I will request, because of course, chair can't make a motion, but I'd like to entertain, if one is, if somebody's willing to make one, I'd like to entertain a motion on items 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7 moving forward today, item four being continued. If you don't get a motion along those lines, I'm afraid that a motion for all seven would fail on a two to two. It's just how I'm seeing it. So that's where-
I'll move approval of the items 1 through 7 without, and remove item 4 for further discussion.
And just for clarification purposes, the language differs, albeit slightly, I think, perhaps importantly, from what's in our board packet on page 51 as the action requested versus what's in the handout. And I am more comfortable, especially since it is what was in the hands of the elected officials, that we specifically reference the language that was in our board packet on page 51. That's what was distributed before we got together. And so a couple minor word changes that folks might or might not raise questions about, but just that we're all literally reading from the same page. If we can make reference to those particular items, that would be great. So we have a motion by Supervisor Holmes to approve items 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7 as delineated on page 51 of our staff packet.
Second.
We have a second by Supervisor Wegant. Under discussion, any comments? Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I would just propose, under discussion, that since we discussed the merit increases earlier and as they're going to be brought back before this board for additional information and clarification, that we also remove item 6 and only approve, or only move on 1, 2, 3, 5, and 7.
Now, I, just, under discussion, I see item 6 actually as being further direction that's consistent, not necessarily conflicting with what we did this morning. I don't know that there's a conflict there. It would obviously require revision to our ordinance, and that was what we had directed. And so if, do you see anything where there's a conflict with this, or is simply duplicative and therefore not necessary?
Simply duplicative and not necessary.
Okay, well, I don't mind making the statement twice.
I've noticed.
So, I'm comfortable with on there. I don't know if the maker of the motion chooses to amend his motion in regard to that, or if you want to keep item 6 on there.
I want to keep item 6 on there.
Okay. So the motion that we have is to approve items 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7 as contained in our staff packet on page 51. Robert, do you have some comment?
Yeah. Don't necessarily assume that your assumption is correct. By the way, but about how the vote would play out.
Oh.
And with that, I just want to communicate, I guess, that the board, over the three years of difficult times, has actually been very engaged. Just because we had some questions today, I don't think should be read as the fact that, as it relates to all of the items on here, speaking for myself, there have been pretty extensive conversations between the board members, County Exec's office. The general direction that we have taken with the board, I think, is something that everybody should understand. The board, I think, would read as being fully supportive over many years. And I think it is, as Jim mentioned, reflective of why our budget is relatively so much better than the other governments we see around us for the most part. And I, on the other hand, though, think that all of us need to be engaged together, participating in an ongoing process, that frankly, it's going to be difficult. But again, the key is to maintain our levels of service in the most appropriate and fair and reasonable way that we can on behalf of the citizens who hired us to be here in the first place.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, roll call, please.
Aye.
Wegant?
Yeah.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. All right, that concludes the actions of the board for this, the 23rd day of February 2010. We stand adjourned.